First item on the agenda for the open work session is the purchasing manual. I know Mr. Nick Rice is here and has stepped out.
He took the five minutes a little.
He took the government five minutes.
It's the government.
I think what we'll do, what we'll do first maybe is depending on if the council, if it's okay with the council. Mr. Price, how are you?
Great. Thanks for having me, President, council members.
What we might do, I mean, you gave us a very good consensus at the bottom of your report as far as what basic changes were being made. If we, why don't we start there and if you could run through that?
Absolutely.
And see what questions the council has.
So, the current manual that's in place was amended last in 97. So, it was, I had talked when first starting with Wayne about looking at some numbers and looking at the thresholds, especially in that document. I'll start at the beginning and if you have questions as we go along. The, in the front of the document, there was a quick reference guide. I updated it and moved that to the back of the manual. The section one was authority for centralized purchasing. That was the current, or the old charter was referenced in there. So, we went ahead and updated that to the current charter. We also removed the school system reference as the county's manual does not include the Board of Education.
What was it that you removed in the charter language? I was confused by that.
Change in the form of government.
It was, it referenced, and it might, you're right, it might not be in the. So, it, in the charter, section 801B references school system and says, "The provisions of subsection A above shall apply to the county school system except in the purchase and sale of technical equipment." It's my understanding that the Board of Education has their own purchasing department that handles their purchasing.
Well, that was a reference of the school system. I was talking about the first item that you said when you removed the old Wycomico County Charter language. Is that what Wayne was referencing?
Yeah, there was a lot of language in the, in the, there's a lot of language in the current purchasing manual that is reflective of the old form of government.
Okay.
So, we clean that language up, change titles, that type of thing, to reflect the executive form.
It was a matter of removing that and then taking what is that exactly in the charter and putting that back in there.
Great. Okay, good. Thanks.
Section two, organization and responsibility, change to reference the purchasing agent and not the administrative director as the head of purchasing. Again, this was, as Wayne stated, from the old form of government. Also updated the structure of the purchasing department. The names of the, or the titles of those people in the purchasing department has changed over the years, so I've changed those to update the current positions in the department. Section three, purchasing principles and policy, no changes were made in that section.
Okay. If anybody has a question as we're going through this, please feel free to.
Do you want the questions as we go through or we have to go through it first and then have questions?
However you'd like to do it, John. I can address the questions as we go through if that would be easier.
Okay. I do have some questions on the section one.
What section are you in, Joe?
Section one, page four, at the bottom of the page, it says, "Purchasing contract involving expenditure more than $5,000." So, that'll be changed to $25,000.
That's what I'm recommending.
Okay.
Which is being proposed.
Okay, but that's not in your summary of charges. So, that hadn't been done yet, so we leave that as it is right now? Is that what you're saying? And then when we approve this, then we go ahead and change it or how do you want to do it?
I'm, I'm not sure how the charter side of that, because that's what is referenced in the current charter, what would be required to change that.
I thought it, thought it was referenced in the charter. It all looked up was the council amendment.
Yeah, from a procedural standpoint, I don't want to play attorney, but from a procedural.
We have an attorney.
Right.
We have. Would you like to, I mean, I know, Mr. Baker, you're here, but I know Laura, you've had that discussion. You reviewed it, if I'm not.
Yeah, actually, I've talked to Mr. Baker about the charter amendment and we can actually go ahead and increase that limit without doing a charter amendment because of the language where it says, "Or such amount as may be set by legislative act."
Right, exactly. So, council has the authority to do that.
Yeah.
Where did we come up with the 25 versus 2015 or 30?
The 25 is a general, what is seen currently in today. The city of Salisbury is 25,000, the state of Maryland is 25,000, Ocean City is 25,000, and the counties, I take, I took a look at all the counties on the eastern shore. All the counties on the eastern shore that have a dedicated purchasing professional or a purchasing department were 25,000 or higher. There were a few that were lower than that, but the purchasing duties then are relied upon in the finance department or public works. So, that, that's taken from some research to see what other counties and other municipalities are currently doing.
Now, to clarify, Joe, that, that, that $25,000 threshold is for formal bid. It doesn't mean that we don't have to undertake informal bids.
Yes.
So, if you could clarify that, that's an important conversation.
Absolutely. What I'm recommending is currently for all purchases for less than $1,000, there's no competitive pricing required. We, we do ask, if it's a simple look up and ask a few other vendors for a current price that you can do that, but we don't require the departments to do that. I'm suggesting or recommending that between 1,000 and 25,000, we are required to competitively price it, but in an informal setting where you are required to get a minimum of three other quotes from other vendors. The current threshold is everything over $5,000 has to be formally bid, advertised, and on the street for a minimum of three weeks.
Question, should we, should we have a work session on this and go ahead and discuss in a work session? Because we're not going to approve it tonight.
This is a work session.
But an individual work session on this individual item rather than, or else are we going to work towards approving, raising, increasing the limit to 25,000?
Well, I mean, we can continue with the conversation if, you know, if council feels like they want to continue and have a second work session to follow up on it, we certainly could do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it deserves discussion. I mean, I think obviously.
It deserves discussion, sure.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Much more than maybe needed than right now.
Well, we don't have to approve anything. I mean, we can have as many work sessions as we want, I guess.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine by me. But I guess, you know, the whole purpose of competitive bid is get the best deal for the taxpayer. It's, you know, bureaucratic, obviously, so there's downside to it. I guess you've got to draw a line somewhere, but, you know, what, why, you know, $25,000 is an arbitrary number like $5,000 is. You know, how much does it cost to advertise? How much are we, you know, in terms, you know, what's the rough cost in terms of man-hours and advertising and stuff like that that we're doing between, you know, that would be limited between 5,000 and 25,000?
In, in my research in FY '16, the county had approximately 113 formal sealed solicitations. That number led to $5,675 in advertising funds for the Daily Times specifically.
How many were below 25,000?
The, there was between 5 and 25, or yeah, 5 and 25,000, there was roughly 49, which was 43% of our bids were in the 5 to 25,000 range. So, in that, there's also, there's, there's a hard cost in the, in the advertising of it. There's also the amount of work that's put into actually drafting the bid documents, advertising the bid documents, and then going through the, an actual evaluation phase, awarding, and going that route. Really, what I, what I see is if, the reason for doing a competitive bid is to try and get the best price and at least get the most competition. In saving, the way that I look at it, in saving 5% on maybe a $7,000 purchase versus actually spending your time on the more higher value bids, if you save 5% on a $1.2 million project, obviously, you're getting a lot more return in your investment. So, the idea is you still are going to get good competitive pricing between 1 and 25,000 by reaching out and actually requesting quotes. But the formal solicitation phase and as well as advertising and everything that goes into it, there's also the time. So, if a department, for instance, one of the first projects I worked on is they replaced the utility body. The utility body cost $5,600. It took roughly two months between the bidding phase and evaluating and awarding and contracting and getting the vendor to actually order the item. So, there's, there's also the flexibility in time and allowing the departments some flexibility to be able to operate more efficiently too as well.
Nick, you said you had hard costs on that?
The hard advertisement cost for FY '16 was.
Just, it's just advertising.
That's just advertising cost, absolutely.
How does the informal process, I mean, we're kind of familiar with the bid process. How's the informal process works? I mean, does anybody check to make sure that, you know?
All, all of the, all of the requisitions that are entered for purchases over $1,000 are funneled through an approval process in our electronic system, which is Munis. So, the departments approve it and eventually it comes to the purchasing department where it's my job then to check to make sure that there is three, three quotes received. If there's not, then I compress the question of, of why were they not received? Are we, are we using a current contract? Is it something that we can only purchase from that one vendor? But ultimately, yes, it is char, it is approved and checked by the purchasing department. The informal process, it requires a minimum of three days. I generally like to tell departments, give vendors a week. All they, it's informal and they just need to contact vendors, say, "This is what we're looking for. This is the good. This is the service we're looking for. We need you to provide us with a price by this time and date."
You're getting competitive price.
Right. It's still hap, the process is still in place.
Absolutely.
You know, the people that are used to dealing with Wycomico County, I'm sure keep up with it or try to. So, what is in place to try to attract? If you're not putting out and advertising for bids, what can be done to attract new bidders? That's, that seems to me that's going to be one of the things you lose here.
Well, one of the things I've heard in, in actually talking with some of the local vendors is they, they decide not to go through because we formally bid. It's, the document itself is more than 20 pages regardless of what you're, you're buying. So, I've heard from many local vendors and vendors in particular that, "Why do I need to sign an affidavit and, and go through this bidding process? I, I just don't feel like it's worth taking my employees' time to go through, read your bid specs, read all the, there's a lot of language in the front end document that doesn't change that protects the county." So, I've heard from some smaller vendors especially that we just, we just decided not to, not to bid. I always like to reach out to the vendors when, if I reached out to you and sent you bid documents and, and you did not respond, I do like to touch base with you and say, "Is there a reason why you decided not to respond?" And one of those reasons I've heard is it's just, it's, it's too difficult and too time-consuming to actually submit a bid for something so small and dollar value.
So, you're thinking, well, by going in this direction, you'll actually get more bids?
I do, I do. I, I think.
Get more local business, Joe.
I think a lot of them have reference to me, you know, Ocean City and city of Salisbury, that the departments can reach out and just receive quotes versus having to formally submit a sealed bid. So, I do.
I know, I know Mark touched on this. I'll, I'll be a little bit more to the point. How can you guarantee no collusion between some departments and vendors? How can you guarantee that? I mean, you know, it's a small community, a lot of people know each other. It's.
Well, and that's one of the reasons why the departments themselves between one and, I'm, I'm recommending between 1 and 10,000, they have the ability to solicit quotes by themselves. Again, with, with me checking on the backend before the purchase is made, before the purchase order is generated. One of the ways I believe is educating them and one of the plans that I have is to sit down with department heads if and when a new purchasing manual is established and do training. And I think in that, you, you tend to open some departments' eyes and the responsibilities that they carry as a county employee and actually soliciting pricing from certain vendors. Now, with that said, over $10,000 would come through my department and I would recommend how we handle it, or I could go through my bidders list. But in order to, to answer your question, I guess, helping departments. I'm always an asset in terms of we have bidders lists for many items, or I've used people in, in my history that I feel like you should reach out to them or have, who have you reached out to? If a department were to come back and it's the same vendor every time, then it's definitely raising that question, you know, have you reached out to other, I know of others that you haven't reached out to? So, there's a minimum of three, but it's recommended as, as many as you possibly can, can find.
Mr. Rosa, this does appear to be right in your, along your, your category.
Thank you, sir. If I can add, our, our munis system does allow for this documentation to be electronically gathered, which is very auditable. Now, my office hasn't done any audits along those lines. It's something else that's in the pipeline that we plan to do at our earliest convenience to take a look at some of these things, but it's very auditable and, and the three bids, something that, that Mr. Holloway's concerns can be addressed if we do some random sampling, we look at some of these bids, we see patterns or not, we check for the fact that they're there or not. So, an audit's in the pipeline for this sort of thing and our system lends itself to that very well.
Thank you, Mr. Rosa. Is there a policy in place where as a department head that's, you know, trying to bid a job has to divulge whether or not there's any association, they have any association with any vendors?
The, to my knowledge, the one that I do know of is if you actually are requesting something be sole sourced, you have to sign whether or not you have any affiliation with the company or anyone that's associated with the company, and they do have to sign off on that.
I would think it might be a good policy to.
It's probably in our ethics code. I think the department head has a relationship with the vendor he's reviewing and follow under our ethics code.
Yeah, because it seems familiar to me that that's in place somewhere.
I think it is.
If we could check, make sure.
And if not, we can definitely, that's something we can look into in terms of.
And maybe, maybe follow that policy, well, maybe with a written statement together with three bids that come in without trying to become.
Sign off on the, on the submission.
Sure.
It would.
Submission.
It would be, it would, that would be as simple as taking the language that's in the sole source document and actually having that added to the informal pricing sheet.
Good. Go ahead, John, did you?
You want to, will MBE continue?
I'll let him continue. Feel free to.
Section two.
Break in when you want.
I'm in section two.
Okay.
I have a question about section two.
Go ahead.
Section two is organization responsibility, page six, section two B, disposal of surplus. Does this apply to Sheriff's Department of Arizona?
For equipment?
Says, "Be responsible for the disposal of surplus, old and waste supplies, materials, equipment of the county, transfer of same offices, departments, agency, county government."
To the best of my knowledge, that is every department. The one thing that I actually spoke with Laura about earlier and we'll touch on it once we get to the back is real property is not a part of this, this surplus in this document.
Okay.
But in terms of equipment, I would, it's, it's my understanding that absolutely all county equipment.
Has to be declared surplus.
So, that means confiscated things that the.
That's an entirely different. Are we talking about drug seizures?
Possibly, yes.
That, that's, that's.
Well, well, not necessarily drug seizures.
That's a different pipeline.
I understand drug seizures are a different pipeline, but other, other items that do happen to be seized, rail, and again.
They can't be disposed of without a court order.
Right. But, but when they are disposed of, do they come under our perpure?
I would, and, and I would assume that this is property that is purchased with county funds.
Okay.
That's how I would, under the purchasing agent's responsibilities.
You raise an interesting point. Let me, let me look at that.
It hasn't been.
Yeah, let me look at that.
Yeah, it hasn't been.
That's an interesting point.
Nick, John's suggesting that there's purchases that have been done and he's questioning whether or not it really did go through the purchasing department or whether it was required to be.
Yeah, anything, I know that anything that the county has purchased that a department deems surplus and wants to dispose of has to be approved. That, that disposal has to be approved. The point that you're raising is something that I would want to research before I give you an answer.
Page seven, structure of purchasing department. Purchasing agent shall be a department level position. Is the purchasing department, department level position? Yes?
It's not a department that's specified in the charter, but it is, it's deemed, it's deemed a department.
It's like the only department that's under, directly under the executive branch, I believe.
Yeah, it's an extension of the executive's office and the, and the purchasing, the purchasing agent is deemed a department head.
And to that point on that same.
No, it's not, no, it's not subject to confirmation because it's not one of those departments that's listed in the charter.
And to that same point.
As having to be confirmed by council.
John, that, the rest of that sentence reads directly responsible to the Director of Administration.
Right.
I believe that came, that came from the old manual and I believe that came from the old charter.
It did.
In researching the, the, the current charter, section 402 executive powers, it does actually state overseeing the purchasing, purchasing agent of the county. So, that, that will be changed from Director of Administration to county executive prior to approval.
On page 12 on section four, purchasing procedures. The purchases where the total amount is between 10,000 and 24,900, should that be 5,000 and 24,900?
No, that would be the, the purchases between 10,000 up to 24,999 is done through the purchasing department.
Right.
So.
Would it turn to be 5,000 or should?
No, the, if you go one bullet point up, I'm recommending that, that the 1,000 to 10,000 is still the same format, but it's done at the department level, not the purchasing level.
We had some issues a while back with splitting invoices to do purchasing. Have you had any of those problems lately or?
Not since I've been here, but I have dealt with them in my career and the best way, again, is, is educating them. It does state it in here that you cannot break up purchases to, to go under a certain threshold. If that is found, the best way to find it is purchase orders that we're seeing come in, the same vendor for the same service, then those questions that are raised to the department, what is, what is the reason for? There may be a reason for it that is legitimate in terms of this purchase was made and then immediately following that something else happened along those lines that we didn't know about when we first contracted with them. But that would definitely be something I would look for when approving purchase orders if, if there's splitting transactions.
Joe, I'd have to check with, with Ray Machichi, but I would suspect that inside Munis, you could set up a flag for that type of an issue.
Yeah.
Where the system itself would flag that for you and say, "Whoa, wait a minute."
If you're entering multiple.
Had this, had this same thing within the past X number of, of days, you know, say 90-day look back, something like that.
Can I ask exactly that?
I mean, does that, you know, when you say you can look for these patterns, right now
it's you who can look for these patterns. There's nothing automatic setup that will raise into your attention.
Not that I know of.
Okay. Okay, so it's just you going through, we're kind of depending on you to make sure that we catch these things.
It's, it's along the same lines as, as checking that the purchasing guidelines are being followed and that those are the, some of the things I look for. If there's quotes attached, if there's justification for, for what they're actually purchasing and what they're doing, is it budgeted? A lot of those are what I'm actually looking for when I'm going through the requisition itself.
Have you found anything like that? I mean.
Not since I've, not since I've been here, no. I, I have had, I have had instances where I need to clarify if quotes were not attached and departments have been great in getting back to me if something may have been missed that wasn't added to the actual attachments. But definitely something that I've, I reach out to the departments to clarify on.
Mr. Baker.
I was thinking, Wade, Wade might be able to verify it, but I mean, since we went with the Munis and the purchasing, I think most of the department heads now aren't trying to split it because it was picked up an awful lot just by following what Nick said.
Yeah.
Looking at the purchase orders as they come through. They stopped a number of them. Yeah, I, I, I would suspect that we could get Munis to, to, to be pretty vigilant in terms of flagging those kinds of things.
Mr. Rosa?
If I can, data analysis reveals that we, we did find some under the old purchase card system. We, we found some instances of splitting. The same data analysis can be performed in Munis. I'm going with Don to Munis training in May and we will address that with the manufacturers if Ray can't come up with something and have a conversation with them.
Great, okay. Very good.
Continuing.
We'll continue.
Section five, purchasing method, page 15.
I think he wants a job.
Page 15?
Bids will be tabulated results available on bidders' resumes fractual after billing. Is there a process for contacting the bidders after the, and should this be included in the manual? The process for contacting the bidders?
The process, we, we email out bid tabulations to everybody that submitted bids as well as post those to the county's website.
Should it be included in the manual?
If you, if you would like, I can, I can definitely add that to it.
I'm asking a question.
In, in my opinion, I, I don't believe that it should be.
Don't think it's necessary.
That it's necessary because I do have these conversations with these vendors and I personally thank the vendors for submitting bids. Here's the bid tabulation and here's how we came to the award that we did.
Page 17, special services solicitation. Do we need this?
Before you answer that question, can you explain the difference between a competitive sealed bid and proposal?
Absolutely. A competitive bid is when we know a product or service that we are going to be purchasing. We can nail down exactly what we're looking for and get an apples-to-apples price from multiple vendors. This, the bid process is then awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meaning they submitted what they were supposed to in a timely manner and it shows that they can provide the product and the service that, that we are looking for. The difference for the competitive sealed proposals is we don't necessarily know what we're looking for, but we have an idea to where we can tell the vendors, "This is what we would like. You come to us, propose how we should do it." Along those lines, the bidding process is then not necessarily the lowest bidder, it's then the best value for the county. It allows us to have evaluation criteria for what we're actually going to be evaluating and do a evaluation committee to score each one of the vendor's proposals and then turn around and award to the best value for the county versus the lowest price.
Evaluation committee?
Yes, there's a, we, there's not one committee. It's, it's generally any county employees that are involved in the project, somebody within the department. If there's another county employee that we feel may have expertise, we generally will ask them to evaluate proposals. Purchasing itself does not evaluate the proposals where we are more of the neutral middle ground between the county and the, the vendors. We, we set, we set up the meetings, we, we run the meetings and, and we're the actual middleman that, that issues out all the documentation.
You had a question on 17, John?
Yeah, on 17, the special services solicitation, do we actually need this statement in here?
Yes, and here's why. There are instances where there may be some work needed on some heavy equipment or something that we cannot tell what is wrong with that equipment, meaning we're not able to actually tell the vendors what we need. At that point in time, we would, let's say we needed a generator worked on, we would need the vendor to then open and, and evaluate what we actually need. and in that we would be charged.
Well, that's what you said last time. And aren't we talking about the same thing about the bidding proposal?
No, the difference is we're actually looking at, let's say, a repair.
Right.
We're, we're not, we know that it's broken.
Right.
So in a, in a proposal, we're getting a good or a service that we, we know what we want, but necessarily how to get it.
Disgusting need.
Yes, so this is more along the lines and one of the examples that I've used in the past is contacting vendors that perform this work and actually having them provide us with a labor rate and maybe a material markup. And that's how we can kind of decide along the lines of who we're going to have do the work. But it does not make sense for the county to pay a vendor to tell us what is wrong and then have to turn around and actually get quotes. It's just, it's going to cost us more in the, in the end.
Okay.
Can we go back to page sixteen?
Sure.
He, piggybacking off other government contracts. We hear that a lot about some of our vehicles we buy, how you bought them under a government contract and I think they come out of Milford, Delaware.
Maryland state contract is one that, that we use a lot of. There are others, but in my experience, it's been Maryland state contracts.
Now, how do you handle that? I mean, do you just piggyback off their contracts?
Absolutely.
Take their price.
Two, I'll make one, one comment and then I'll address your question. This will actually be updated. It came to my attention today that there was a legislative bill, twenty-ten oh one, that added some language in there that absolutely needed to be in there. And I've actually addressed with some other departments since I've been here is it does require that these contracts are current open contracts. We cannot piggyback off of a contract that has ended. So, so that will be updated in here to, to address the legislative bill that was passed in twenty-ten.
Well, I would suggest that you go a little deeper than that. About seven or eight years ago, not long after I came on to council, the county bought a utility truck. That was a four-wheel drive. I don't guess it had a, it didn't have a utility body, it was a pickup truck. I think it was for county roads or landfill. And I requested the spec sheet on it and the bid sheet and they got it from Milford, that's where it came from. And so I went shopping as a citizen with those same specs. And at two different dealerships in Wycomico County, I could have bought that truck five hundred and, five hundred and some change cheaper.
There's.
And bought it, bought it off a local dealer, somebody in this county that employed local people. So just assuming that that's a great deal, I think is a mistake.
Absolutely, and there's, the language also includes that it must be in the best interest of the county. This is not word for word, this is my writing, the, the actual word for word that was passed would be added. But it must be in the best interest of the county as deemed by the purchasing agent. I, I have tried to educate departments as I've worked with them so far. And again, this would be something absolutely needed in the training session with department heads is just because there's a contract out there, it does not necessarily mean that is the best price.
But you just said, when I asked you, you would go with that contract. When I asked you, you said you wouldn't do it.
You have the ability to go with that contract and not competitively bid it out. But you have the option to do, to do both. A lot of, in my experience, you will get departments that want to just use the contract because it's quick and easy. I have experienced in Ocean, in my time in Ocean City, we purchased a lot of heavy equipment and they wanted to use a Maryland state contract and we had told them, no, we want to actually take some, we have some time, we want to bid it out. This is not, you know, something we're in a rush to get. By bidding it out, we saved almost a quarter of a million dollars. So the argument then was, well, there's a state contract, how are they going to beat that price? A vendor absolutely came in and, and beat their price. So there's, there's a couple of things I want to educate them on it. And also another point is they need to understand that if you are piggybacking off of a contract, you are not negotiating separate terms and conditions to your contract. You are taking their contract word for word for what it is. So in, in your reference to the spec sheet, if there was one item on that spec sheet different than the contract that they're piggybacking off of, it would no longer be considered a piggyback and it would be in violation of the purchasing policy. So I, I, I think there's a lot of room for education and training in the departments and I absolutely look forward to doing that.
Yeah, I think following a, uh, piggybacking off another contract really needs looking at.
Absolutely.
So you're going to be implementing a time restriction there as far as not being able to do so if it's an old contract, right?
If it's not current, you cannot piggyback.
Is that current, is that current here or is it something?
That's in the legislative bill that was passed that will be added to this.
That will be added to it, okay.
Absolutely, yep. This, the, the manual that I had did not include that legislative bill.
Okay.
So I will definitely add that.
That was our policy, but we always had, it had to be a current existing contract.
Okay. John, uh.
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
Great, excellent. You can continue.
Okay.
I, I've probably covered everything, but was there anything else that?
I'll just touch a little further.
Sure.
We touched some things. So the, the main point of, of coming before you today with, with this new manual is the thresholds itself. So section four, the purchasing procedures. I updated the, the quick reference guide. One of the things I really like about that is it's a one sheet, it's at the back of the manual. It's a one sheet that you can give to somebody and they can completely understand the county's rules and regulations in terms of, of purchasing thresholds. Purchases of less than a thousand dollars, we didn't require competitive pricing and that is staying the same.
That's page thirty, for whoever's trying to follow it.
The quick reference guide?
It's a PDF, page one ninety-one, but the quick reference guide is page thirty in, at the bottom of their page.
So purchases between one thousand and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine will require three written quotes. The using departments will have the ability to solicit quotes up to nine hundred and ninety, nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Previously, the using department would contact the purchasing department for purchases above a thousand dollars and all those came through the purchasing department. These, as I mentioned earlier, these purchases are still, even though the quotes are being received by the departments, it's still being approved by the purchasing agent through the requisition process in MUNIS. All documentation must be attached, as Steve mentioned, to, into, in the requisition. That's one of the things I really like about the county system, the MUNIS system. In my previous position, we didn't have the ability to do attachments, you just had to write in, in comments. So that's one of the things I really like about, you can see physical written quotes. Purchases of ten thousand dollars and above will funnel through the purchasing department. Purchases greater than twenty-five thousand will require the formal solicitation done by the purchasing department in conjunction with the using department. One of the things that we're recommending is currently advertising. We spoke a little bit about the amount of money that's spent on advertising. In the current manual, it states that it would be advertised on the bid board downstairs in the lobby, on the county's website as well as in a local newspaper. I've done some research and discussed with, with legal in terms of does the bid board downstairs in the, in the GOB lobby, does that satisfy our public notice requirement? And we do believe that it does. I, I, in my opinion, do not feel that I get additional vendors from advertising in newspapers. As I stated earlier, I really like to reach out to make sure that I know the vendors that are interested in these products and goods and services are getting these documents. I reach out to them and physically email them the, the documents, not just trust that we're reaching them in, in different avenues.
Well, I liked that when I read it because I know the costs that we are always incurring through, through those types of advertising expenses. But, you know, from what Councilman Holloway touched on earlier, are you certain that you are reaching out to all the potential vendors through this process alone?
I believe so, and the reason why there's additional, the county website is nice. We do require, we do ask that vendors sign up. They can sign up to different categories within our website. Anytime something's posted, they will receive a text or an email that something's been posted. One of the things I really like is E. Maryland Marketplace, which is the state of Maryland's bid board. I post everything formal bid on that website that reaches small and minority businesses, that reaches a huge pool of vendors throughout the state.
Does Delaware have a similar?
What's that?
Does Delaware have a similar?
I, I do not know off the top of my head.
Because I would assume that some of, I mean, it's great to use Maryland vendors, but I would assume that we would also possibly be looking for.
We, we absolutely can, we absolutely can post and it's one of the things I add in there. Anytime a department or we had an idea, you know, maybe this should be posted here, it's just not a requirement. Whereas Comar from Maryland does require that all formal solicitations be posted on E. Maryland. And one of the other things in, to touch on reaching out to vendors, that's kind of where I like to do the legwork in terms of, of, of going on the internet, looking in the area, local vendors, who's interested, making phone calls. And as time goes on, you develop a bidders list. Vendors will reach out to my department and say, this is who I am, this is what we do. And then I'll take their information and add that to, to bidders list for future reference. So I do feel like we're, I feel the, the, the personal reaching out and, and doing the research is much more successful in reaching vendors than posting to a local newspaper. And one of the things I noticed right away and starting in the county was the Daily Times, we pay, I believe it's the minimum of sixty dollars for every single advertisement. So I, I, I definitely don't think we're getting our value back on that.
We're supporting a local business.
Now, the Salisbury Independent, I believe, has better rates, I'm not sure. That was for Greg Bassett.
There's something in there, but it has to be a paid publication and for, well, I don't know about that, but our notices are, hearing notices has to be a paid.
I believe those are, are different in terms, the, the state does not require, to the best of my knowledge, that we advertise in a local newspaper.
Okay.
All right, I, I updated the purchase order information. The old manual still referenced the handwritten purchase orders, so I've added the information of our electronic MUNIS system that we currently use. We removed the health department language that was under professional service as this was not a county function. In section five, purchasing methods, removed information covered in the previous section, section four. It, it pretty much stated the, the same information that was just covered in the previous section and updated the threshold for formal competitive sealed bid and proposal from five thousand to twenty-five thousand. That's where we talk a little bit more in terms of the difference between the bidding and the proposal process.
Yeah, but I, I, I guess it would be good to, I, I don't think it's too premature to try to get council's feeling as far as this change from five thousand to twenty-five, because that seems probably out of everything we're doing, the most.
That's the meat and potatoes.
Yeah, that's the most controversial. I don't know, I mean, you've, you've had time to review it, I guess. I don't know what, what, what everyone feels about this. John?
Are you looking for consensus or?
I'm kind of trying to see if we have a consensus on this.
I'm in favor, but I think we've talked about it for the last number of years, about moving the threshold up. And I think it's necessary, it's just good business practice, it makes sense.
And that the measures are still in place to make sure we get a, a good bid. Mark, you have a.
I'm tentatively okay, he makes a good case, but I've not, not thought about it too thoroughly, but, you know, you know, he's, he's done a good sales job so far.
What do you, what do you, Ernie?
Very good.
Joe?
I suppose so, yeah.
That's as close as you're ever going to get.
You know, just to come back to you, I think what I heard here was that you're looking for some additional safeguards in place in the processes and we're certainly willing to look at that and come back to you on those kinds of things. I mean, you made a couple of very good points.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, efficiency is good and we want to work towards that, you know, that, but, you know, you, when you're dealing with other people's money. You know, but when you're showing back account, you're very careful because it comes out of your pocket when you're a department head, it's not your own money.
I understand.
You know.
Well, that, that's one of the cases that I want to try and make in terms of that forty-three percent that is between that five and twenty-five thousand. Having to spend the time on those smaller purchases, when you alleviate that, then you can, you can really focus on writing a good spec and not missing something that would be cost saving in what you're buying or what you're doing. So I, I want to be able to focus my department on, on saving the money where, where we're getting the best value back.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's trade-offs, obviously, and it's just, you know.
And one of, and one of the, and it was, like, like I stated, it was one of the things I noticed in, in researching the other counties in the eastern shore is when you seen the low numbers, it was matched with not necessarily having somebody in that purchasing position safeguard or watching it. So they feel, they feel the best way to, to have those measures is doing formal solicitations. When you, when you bring in the, the purchasing department and, and purchasing professionals, you're able to, one, I believe, education and training the departments that are going to be making these purchases and doing these goods and services, that is where you really want to get in because they're the ones in the day-to-day operations. They're telling me what they need and then I'm attempting to, to get them the best price for what they're looking for.
So, all right, I just wanted to take, stop for a second just to make sure we knew, got the temperature.
Section, section six was emergency purchasing procedures. There were no changes made there. There are instances where we have an emergency purchase, as Wayne alluded to earlier, the circuit, the circuit court with the fire. That needs to be addressed as soon as possible. There's safety on the line, you know, and we have compliance issues that we need to. So there are instances where the bidding process is not feasible due to an actual emergency of, of life or equipment. Section seven, authority to waive competitive bidding. The only changes there were I added examples to show where are some examples that we would be avoiding the competitive bidding process. And again, we spoke about, you know, sole sourcing and that kind of thing. I like to use those as last resort, so I always like to make sure that we are getting competitive pricing when we can get competitive pricing. Section eight, avoiding and resolving disputes in bidding, there are no changes there. It speaks to the dispute process that vendors can follow. Section, section nine, payments to vendors. I removed, there was a direct payment request form, it was outdated. I don't, I don't like to put forms in the manual itself because the forms are living documents and they can be updated periodically. So I just removed that form. The direct, the direct payment is, is a form of, of an electronic payment as well. Section ten, bond requirements. This was, there's, there's a change that I'm recommending there. Currently, the, the county requires that we, we request bonding from vendors for every purchase over twenty-five thousand dollars. There's, I'm requesting that we raise that to a hundred thousand. That number, the hundred thousand number, comes from the research of the surrounding counties and what other municipalities are actually doing. The language itself reads that bonds shall be mandatory on construction projects where the total cost is estimated to be excess of a hundred thousand dollars. However, the county may require bonds in other situations if the purchasing agent feels the county could be damaged by the failure of, of a bidder to properly execute the contract. That would be in high-risk situations. It might not necessarily be a high dollar value, but we would still want to request bonding. A couple, a couple of reasons why I want to, I want to recommend to increase that would be the bonding requirements increase the cost to the county. So every time we require bonds, the, the vendors then turn around and, and pass that price to, to, to receive a bond or a surety from a, from a, a vendor on to us in our, in the price that we're going to pay for the project. It also could potentially limit the pool of bidders where some small, you know, local vendors might not have the ability or want to get bonding requirements.
But doesn't these bonds protect the county and the taxpayers of Wycomico County? I mean, aren't you? I mean, that's what they're, that's what they're there for.
Absolutely, absolutely, and that's why, that's why we want, I, I don't want to require that we do them for every bid. If, if it were to stay at twenty-five thousand, then every single formal solicitation that we did, we would require bonding, which would be a bid bond, performance and payment bonds. There are absolutely times where it's less than a hundred thousand dollars that we want to protect the county. It's, it's just the, 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 the payment, having to pay for the cost of those bonds as well as limiting your pool of bidders doesn't seem to be the norm today in terms of what other people are doing. And on that sheet of the other counties that I've referenced, it actually states their bonding requirements. A lot of times, they, they may not even put a number, they might just put at the discretion of the county. That way you have the ability to, if we're buying something that there's really low risk, it's not worth paying for the bonding requirements.
How many times have bonds come into play, you know, in terms of this, between twenty-five and a hundred thousand dollars? Have we ever needed them?
Since I've been here, I have not heard of where bonds have actually been pulled. I mean, we could, I'm sure we could certainly do some, some digging, but I haven't heard of it. And in, in my experience, there was only one instance that I know of, and that was in Ocean City. There was an issue with the restrooms on the boardwalk where we had to do, we had to pull the contractor's bond for not completing the project. Section eleven, surplus pro- Section eleven, surplus property, there were no changes, and section twelve, the glossary, there were no changes.
Question. Property, surplus property, real property is not really addressed in surplus property. We listed as equipment, and we have, but there's no mention of real property.
It's covered in the county code, that's up to the, exactly.
That's in the code, John.
It's under chapter twenty-two of the code.
Okay.
And it states how to handle the surplus of real property.
Okay. Any other questions? Appreciate it. Excellent, excellent presentation.
Good job. Thank you very much for having me. Appreciate your guys' time.
What's the next step, then? Where do we go?
Probably, if, if, I suppose, Laura, if they're entertaining increasing the threshold, there'd be an introduction of, of a legislative bill to do so, right?
Is it going to be a resolution or a legislative bill?
Legislative bill. Has to be legislative bill. That's what I thought. It has to have supermajority. Has to have supermajority. Well, I mean, I would take the, you get, you mentioned a couple of changes to the personnel purchasing manual. I would anticipate that you would make those and send them back to the council, and then they could do both of them simultaneously. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, once you've done that, that would be, yeah, we would like to see it back.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda for the work session is the, we need to stop for about thirty, thirty seconds, okay?